So are you sad? Are you sad?
Yep.
It's not time to go send them in the car.
Yep.
It's about all you get.
And if you can't be there, you know, you say your goodbyes and I think you did ask.
We had nothing on the agenda.
Oh, so you can't go there.
So we're going to enjoy this and just kind of have a fun one.
That's kind of all you do. I can be around if you don't want to do it. Do you want to go do it together?
Wednesday morning, this Wednesday?
Yeah, I won't be back in town. You're going to be in Branson?
Yeah, I'm leaving from Branson now, so.
Yeah, just let me know, just text me and tell me your name if you're going to make it and try to be available.
What?
Did you ever talk to the car?
Yeah, I'll be in Joplin this weekend. I come back from Branson Wednesday night and then I'll be home Thursday, Friday, and then turn around Saturday and go to Joplin for a bowling tournament.
Yep.
Then I'm home for, then I'm home and then I do the budget retreat and then leave for Columbia for four days for a real estate conference. It's like April shot. I'm like, thank God I got my closing lineup for May already, so.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started.
Jacobs?
Here.
Lund?
Here.
Watts?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Approval of the minutes?
Move to approve.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adoption of the agenda?
Move to adopt.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, we have the K-9 presentation.
So actually, one of my agents came up with the idea that we should help the police department because we're older on real estate and home of man's best friend, they needed, they needed some help. And so we got together the idea to do a fundraiser and I've got part of my team here tonight and we wanted to make a presentation and I wanted to also thank Mike Slavich with Mike's Barbecue. He's new to town and he has a full-time job and he smokes meat at night, so he couldn't be here, but he, he raised 2,300 of this amount. So we're here to present to the police department $11,698.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. It's really, I mean, it's important to have community support and this is going to go a long way towards getting us to our $20,000 goal, so.
I was just trying to be polite.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it.
I should. Where are we at in our, where are we at in the numbers?
I think we're close to 17 and we've got Casey Johnson County tomorrow and I've got something else I'll share with you guys later, so probably early summer.
All right, thank you. Okay, next we have a first and second reading of an ordinance amending ordinance 5474 concerning the adopted fiscal year 19 annual budget for the general fund.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, what you have before you is an ordinance to amend the Episcopal 19 budget. These amendments total $82,644, which is an increase to the budget of the fund. For both the electrical upgrade and the animal shelter vehicles will come from restricted funds that were set aside basically for these purchases. I'd like to point out the funding of the executive search fund for the fire chief, which is supposed to be paid for totally from the fire budget with no additional funding needed from the budget. So that's one we were able to do within the fire budget itself. Are there any questions with any of the amendments?
I have just a quick question.
Okay.
On this budget amendment request?
Yes.
There's two lines for office supplies. Are they, are those different? Like, are they in different categories because one is city manager and one is HR?
Oh, yes.
Move to approve.
Jake?
Move to approve for second reading.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an order to amending ordinance 5474 concerning the adopted fiscal year 19 annual budget for the general fund. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance amending section 10-37 to adopt the new subsection W related to the open burning of vegetative materials of the adopted fire code of the code of ordinances.
Madam Mayor, members of council, last meeting, I briefed you on this would be coming forth. This is a mandate that came from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. They used to manage the commercial burning and large-scale burning of vegetative wastes. They've since told the municipalities that the rules have to, are going to stay in place and they even added a few extras and left the enforcement up to the municipalities or the local jurisdictions. So with Mr. Harris's help, we wrote an ordinance to cover these in the city. They're not, they don't happen very often, but when they do, this way it gives us a little more. Because we're going to have to monitor them more. We have to check them repeatedly during the day, make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. They have to put them out at night and start again next day and quite a bit more oversight than we did in the past. So this is going to allow us to charge a relatively small fee for the permit in the first place and then also submits a bond. So that if you follow the rules and you get everything done and we don't have to come out in the middle of the night like we have in the past and spend three or four hours putting it out, you'll get your bond back and everything will be fine. Otherwise, that bond will be forfeited. And it's for, like I said, mainly commercial waste or if you have more than 80 cubic yards in your backyard that you'd like to burn, which is quite a lot. So this is an addition to give us the authority to enforce those rules.
So this doesn't have any effect on kind of just when I went to the animal shelter today last week when I went over there, our burnt, our pile over there has been burning. Does that affect, does this ordinance affect that pile burning or?
Outside of the city limits, up to half a mile away, if we have sufficient reasoning that it is causing environmental problem inside our jurisdiction, we can do something. But it has to be complaint-driven. It has to be, we have to go out and look and this is where it becomes fun because you have to determine opacity of the smoke, the content of the smoke, the toxicity of the smoke before you determine that it's a danger to incite your magic line. So they technically burn in the county and we don't have.
Isn't that in the city limits though, but?
Your burnt pile is.
The burnt pile is. Oh, so okay, so directly across the street, that's not in the city, okay.
Yeah.
I get confused with the city limits are blurred over there, so, okay.
Across the street from the city limits, yeah. Like I said, if somebody had a pile of tires 100 yards outside the city and was blowing through town, then the law gives us the effect to do that. But there's a lot of biting to that to get to that point.
So that property is owned by the Parks Department?
Right.
Which is not the city and they give us permission to use that space for that public use?
I see a lot of.
But it is outside city limits.
Okay, I knew the lines kind of did some maneuvering down there and I didn't realize that pile was not in the city limits.
I know, right, the east side of that street is inside city limits, the west side of the street is outside city limits.
So the soccer, the soccer fields?
They're outside city limits.
Okay, they're outside city limits too, okay.
Move said bill be passed secondly.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance amending section 10-37 to adopt a new subsection W related to open burning of vegetative, vegetative materials of the adopted fire code of the city, of the code of ordinances. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Next, we have the downtown facade grant discussion.
Just going to bring up a different presentation for me. We've had a request that would be a change in the rules of who we can or what type of projects we could award the program funds for. So I wanted to give you a little, in its brief, just five slides, background on this program since I think some of you, it predates some of, some of your times on council. This is a program that started in 2013. The city council wanted to encourage, we were just coming out of the dream project. And the city council wanted to encourage appropriate facade improvements to buildings, existing buildings in the dream boundary. And so you have there, those are the, that's the entirety of what you just passed out of all the program guidelines. And it goes into a lot more detail than I'm going to go into here, but it did start in 2013. The city, every year since then has budgeted 5,000 annually for the program. A partner in the program with us is Main Street and they also budget money towards that. It's usually 1,000 to 2,000. And so they have funded some of the grants as opposed to using the city's funds for it. And then there is a committee that considers the applications, reviews the projects and awards the funds and then inspects them at the end. That is made up of a city staff person at the moment, a Main Street representative, typically their director, and a member from the historic preservation commission. So I think the current rep is Pat Smith. So the three people we get together to look at that. And generally, from when an application is received to when the notice to proceed is issued, it's within about a weeks' time. Business owners are quick to move when they're ready to do these and so we try not to slow them down. So we try to award those down about a week and then once the project's completed and they've submitted their receipts and their after picture, then we also try to turn that check around within a week to two weeks. So that they're, they get reimbursed as quickly as possible. Over the seven years, we've touched 13 buildings, we've awarded 21 grants, 18, little over 18,000 in grant dollars have been awarded matched by a little over 46,000 in private funds. Those are dollar-for-dollar grant dollars. So every grant dollar spent is required to have $1 private match and usually it's far more than that, as you can see. For a total reinvestment of 64,000, little over 64,000 in those 13 building and those are either front or rear facades. Here's some before and after picture. That's a tranquility shop on the left. They actually had two grants on that building, one for two different awnings, each for different awnings. Either the owner or the tenant can apply for the funds. If the tenant applies for the grant, they just need the owner's permission, the building owner's permission. Cathay Black Adders had three grants and the first one was for tuck pointing and painting. Then they came in for windows and then last they did the, the awning and the sign up above. Julie, the, the business owner, applied for that one as opposed to the first two were the building owner. Here on the right, I think it's Salon Vogue, used to be Brooks TV and that was a paint grant. On the left, Crave and before that impulse, there have been two grants on that for awnings. The one on the right is one of Steve Wong's building, had infinite smiles photography in it for a while. He's done an awning grant and she did a sign grant. The building that I believe is the vape shop now that Katie Scully owns, they did an awning grant. Jaeger's did an awning grant. On the left, when it was ivory and lace bridal, Steve did an awning grant. And then later he did the back of the building with a tuck pointing on that building and some paintwork and improvements around the windows. The former bike shop, the new owner, she did windows for window treatments. All Stars Barber Shop has had two grants, the first for the big picture window and second for the barber pole. So he's still going to take barber pole and put it up high enough so it hopefully survives fatalism. And then Green Truck Bakery has had two, the first for the windows and the door and framing on the front and paint and then the second for the sign. And you can't, with that angle, see the sign very well, but it is one of, that's the one we just closed out a few weeks ago. So current eligible activities, you can see in the yellow highlighted there, in that language is the very bottom of the first page of what we passed out. And it limits it to taking place on either the front or rear facade of the building. We have a request for this building here in the picture. She would like for us to consider an application, but that is on a sidewall, so right now we couldn't fund that. So the question that staff is bringing to you is if we could change that language, this is a document that was originally adopted in 2013 by council by resolution. So it would take a motion of council to change the language on that document. And staff would ask that you consider changing that paragraph so that it would allow for it to take place on either the front or rear facade or side facades that open to a public space or common, a common space or public right of waste. So that in, like in this case, we could, she'd like to take down the bank customer parking, so it's not a bank there anymore. And also to do tuck pointing and painting for the preservation of the wall itself. So that's where we're at. We've asked permission to change that language. May I have any answer, any questions about the program as well?
So what is the, I mean, what is the reason for, for signage being on there? Because I mean, signage is pretty distinct to a specific business.
It is. A lot of cities do sign grants and so we had rolled it into this one instead of having a separate process. It does cause some change in, in turnover, yeah, especially when they put it on their awning. But I think the original, this money is connected to, and tied to the historic preservation side and that it be in keeping with the, the secretary's standards for rehabilitation and restoration. So if you're willing to do signage that's in keeping with the, the character of the district, the area in that dream boundary, then we were willing to fund it. So for instance, if you wanted neon, we wouldn't fund neon. So I think it's more of a carrot approach than, since we don't have actual design guidelines for the downtown, you don't have an overlay district with your, you know, preservation side of it. This was meant to be a carrot to encourage them to have appropriate signage.
Are there drawings required for, for any of these?
It, it depends on the scope. I mean, if you like for with a, a masonry one, we don't usually get drawings. We get mortar type, paint color. We, or like with an awning, we want a sample of the fabric or the exact color that you're picking so that we can check that. With, so, but with an awning, we don't get, we, the grant committee, we wouldn't get method of attachment or any of that. We work hand-in-hand when or if a project requires a building permit, that our application materials are used with that permit and when the permit's ready. And that's where they're going to be concerned about method of attachment and size and setbacks, that once that's ready, then we're ready to issue.
Okay, anything on wind, wind tolerance for, for awnings or?
Not in the grant side of it.
Okay.
On the grant side, we are concerned with the type of awning, like a bubble awning is generally frowned upon from the time period standpoint.
Right.
So we have not funded those in the past and then we look at color. That's the type of thing we're looking at on the awnings.
Okay, thank you.
It was a helpful program back, it was probably a year and a half ago, if you remember, we had to close off part of the sidewalk around the bike shop because we had pieces coming off and it was a concern. And the business owner had concern about costs of doing those repairs because obviously they had a lot of other costs they were investing into the building. And so it was helpful for staff, even though we were kind of being the bad guy a little bit, coming out and making them fix it, to be able to bring this to the table as an option of, hey, here's an opportunity if you want to apply for this grant, this can help cover some of your costs. And so I think that was a helpful and successful project for that as well.
And the max grant award is $1,000, so it is meant to give several grants within one budget here.
I would move to approve the, the request.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, we have appearances to the council not listed on the agenda.
Yes, I'm Sue Evans and I'm representing Pioneer Garden Club, which has taken care of the community rose garden at the corner of Burkhardt Road and Gay Street for about 80 years. And now the chairman of that rose garden is Mary Owens, who is with me this evening. And I am asking for money to replace the, about a third of the walkway in that garden. The north third, which is very close to the gazebo there and joins the property of the Baptist church. And we have asked for a grant, which we got turned down on first and we resubmitted. They had money left over and we were able to get $1,000. What I'm doing this evening is asking the city to pay for the rest of that with our club putting up that $1,000 grant money. I have received three bids on getting that job done. Mr. Coleman and McCarty have estimated the cost of the city doing that job at $5,400. But I have bids from three local concrete people for $3,085, $2850 and the last one is $2,200. So I am asking the city if they will come up with $1,200 plus our $1,000 grant money to replace that concrete sidewalk.
If you might add to this, they came to us talking about this with current sidewalk program. It does not fall into criteria of being within the right of way to, to apply those funds towards this project. To give them a number of prevailing wage, number to give them kind of a ballpark of what the, the cost would be on that and ask the group to go back and get three bids. The garden club doesn't ask much from the city. They do this work out there. It's a nice asset for the community. Staff was looking for a way to help them. They came to us and we're trying, we're trying to work together on this, but there was nothing funded for this. The area that they, that's there, the mowing is done by the Parks Department. We do from time to time do debris pickup and everything clean and, and taking care of the property. But other than that, you know, pick up a few limbs and things to put out for us, but we have no association on our side. It's pretty much a self-built project. It's been an asset to the community for all of you.
And two years ago, we spent $700 of our money on a new roof for the gazebo.
Matthew, what would you anticipate those funds coming from?
No, I would kind of put a pause. This is on items, not on the agenda. So this isn't something council can make a decision on this evening. I would be happy to put it on a, on a future agenda for council consideration, at which time staff will have prepared any type of financial solution for helping with that at this time. But I don't want to get the council in trouble for taking action on something that wasn't properly notified as part of the agenda. This does sit on city property. I think we have some cleanup work to do with the deed as we looked at it, the city staff, that there's some questioning about the, the property is in the name of the neighboring church or the city or a mix thereof. So we do have a little bit of legal work to do to clean up, to make sure the records reflect that the city owns that property, if in fact we do. But typically, my recommendation on a request like this would be no, but given that it's on city property, I think we should probably consider it. So I will place that on the next agenda item. Do you know how long your bids are good for?
No, I don't.
Or they?
Should be good for.
For the two weeks?
30 days, I'm thinking.
For the two weeks, so I will put it on the next council agenda for the second meeting of this month.
When do you have to use your grant?
This spring. There isn't any deadline, but we must prove to them that we have spent the money to beautify the rose garden.
Again, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the request. It's just I want to make sure that we're handling it legally properly.
So this is, this is a sidewalk. This isn't the main sidewalk going around. It's a sidewalk inside of the?
It's in, within the, the boundaries of the rose garden itself.
Goes down the middle of the.
And that's why it doesn't qualify for?
We've had to demonstrate cyclical over in that area, sidewalk work over in that area to try to make accessibility better, but we, we haven't done anything with the, the rose garden. We can't get outside the road.
Right, okay.
Well, I drive by it every day and I love it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
See a lot of photographers out there, maybe taking advantage of it.
I think they've had a wedding or two.
We've had some weddings in the gazebo.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, there are no appointments for tonight. So we have miscellaneous matters from the mayor and/or city council.
Well, I'll try to be brief, since there is a, I understand, a basketball game that's going to be taking place tonight. I've enjoyed my time on council. I've had the privilege to work with some, some excellent leaders in, in my career, in my varied careers. And I have never had the privilege to work with a more talented staff. And I'd just like for those that are assembled here to know that. And we, it, it's been a, it's been an honor and a privilege to, to work with each of you. Thank you.
And I've enjoyed sitting by you.
I can play off of that just a little bit too. I don't know that we'll have a big crowd on Wednesday, so. Yeah, I feel the same. I was obviously interested in doing this and it was kind of a position you don't see someone my age always jumping into. But it was not only very educational for me, but it was really neat to, I feel like Bob and I brought two very different points of view to the council. And I've enjoyed spending three years trying to figure out what infrastructure means. But also, I hope, you know, hope. But also, I hope, you know, hope walking out of this, that we've made a difference in, in some things along the way, because that was really the goal all along. And I look forward to seeing what's gonna happen with the new council, I'm very confident in the people the community selected, and I think we would've had a good situation no matter what, and I feel good about that. Thank you to everyone, you're welcome to come on Wednesday, but I hear it's a short agenda.
Wednesday four o'clock in this building.
New mayor, new pro temp.
All right, it's not coming up, but I bet you're next. Yes, city managers report.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to councilmember Watts and Johnson for their service for the last three years as a city manager, but sometimes it's a little scary sometimes when your bosses change. And in a council, the dynamics can change very quickly, but I think you guys have been a good asset to the council and to the community, and I've appreciated the expertise and the experience you guys have brought through the council and to the community for volunteering. It's a thankless job a lot of times, sometimes you have to make some very tough decisions that are popular, and you get caught in the middle sometimes, but I appreciate you looking out for the best interests of Lawrenceburg as a whole, and, and taking the time out of your personal schedules to be involved, and I think, I think the difference does show. And then I wanna give a welcome to the new incoming council members. I have member Holbert and Brooks that'll be coming in, and I look forward to working with them as well. Already kinda started doing some onboarding with them and talking with them, and I think they also have great ideas that they'll bring to the table, and look forward to working with them and continue to work with the council more and more. Of course, we won't say official goodbyes in a couple of days, but you're right, we'll be in good vibes tonight, and we will probably stay. So, other than that, the new council will come on board, and then we're, we're getting right in the budget really fast. So there's no arrests for the weary, and it'll be baptism by fire for the council as they come in. And, but we look forward to taking the council around to the different departments and showing what we've accomplished with the funds you have budgeted for the last couple of years, and then what the needs are for the upcoming year. And we have some very important conversations to have on behalf of the community over the coming weeks, as we determine the budget priorities and balancing for the next fiscal year. Other than that, I don't have anything else of the evening, and I'll be quiet.
Finance report?
Yes, I did wanna point out some things regarding the six-month review of budget. We're currently about just under seven percent under budget when it comes to revenue. I've been talking to a few other finance directors around, around the state, and I think the consensus is, is that it was the weather. Revenue, sales type revenues down basically statewide in, in the areas that had inclement weather this winter. So we're hoping to see a bounce back from that. I do think that at, at the end of fiscal nineteen, we will be close to, to what we budgeted on revenue and on expenses. The second quarter expenses for the general fund are, are up, but they always usually are in the second quarter, because we have, we pay our insurance, and we pay workman's comp in the second quarter. And so both of those were up quite a bit this year, especially workman's comp, but we did expect that. And then the CIP numbers are, they are pretty much right on. We had a little, we had an extra expense in there budgeted for capital infrastructure due to the Hope, Hope Street Phase Four, that we ended up not needing. So we're in a better position than we first realized with the CIP. I think that's about it.
Thank you, bye.
I'm gonna put a plug in for two events coming up that I didn't put in the report. Remind everybody that our homeowners code class will be May seventh at the community center from six to eight-thirty. And that is for people who are thinking about doing a project this summer, homeowners, whether it's doing a shed, or adding on, or remodeling your kitchen. If you have questions about the code, or what the permit process is like, our building official or our city planner teach that class, and you get a lot of one-on-one attention specific to your project, and twenty dollars off your building permit, so if you attend. And then the luncheon for Joe Kushner retiring will be on the seventeenth. As we stated earlier, I can confirm now it'll be at eleven AM with the program at eleven-thirty, and it will be at Station Two.
April, May?
What?
May.
May, okay.
Yeah, it is May, yeah, Friday, May seventeenth. Thank you.
I've had some questions in regard to the downtown trees that we had, the ice storm damage on them. Currently, we're seeking a trim grant in our military department of conservation, to have certified arbers come in and trim those trees. So if you get questions of what are we planning on doing with them, that's, that will be the plan, but it'll take a few months for that trim grant to get approved. With that, also, there was some discussion from the downtown folks today about us filling in some of the tree grates. We've got some trees that were vandalized and broke off, and we have empty grates sitting there replacing the trees, which we tried several times to prove the fuel, because they continue to be broken off by visitors downtown. We had filled gravel in those, those grates to keep people from tripping over them, and that kept getting scooped out. So we're sort of to fill in a, a layer of concrete within that circle, so we wouldn't have a tripping hazard or a liability. So if a question comes about why we did that, that's why it was done, it can very easily be broken out if we put in a layer of gate.
So along with that, we've been discussing with downtown Main Street also on partnership on that. So if, if anyone would like to donate a tree to that cause, and I think Main Street has also designed a wrought iron gate that goes around the tree trunk to help protect that for an additional cost, if anyone's interested in helping beautify downtown or would like to donate towards that, they're welcome to do that. And as Slim stated, we can remove that temporary concrete, so the tree can be replanted in there. But again, it's just not a good use of taxpayer dollars right now to keep replacing trees at two to four hundred dollars a pop, to not have them last more than a couple of weeks. So we've, we've kinda given up on that. But if people wanna donate and, and do that, we're willing to partner and, and help with that, whether through Main Street or any resident or downtown business owner to replenish those trees downtown. And we have a list of approved trees for downtown from our tree board, of which trees are appropriate in that setting downtown as well.
All right, thank you, Gary?
I, on behalf of the D O S B, I wanna thank the council for allowing the lodging tax to be placed on, on April second during municipal election. Without your support, that wouldn't have been possible, so I greatly appreciate you all allowing us to do that. I promise it's gonna be a while before I do the whole, you don't stay, you don't pay. Cause I know several, you've heard that several times, but thank you, sixty-nine percent, so we're pretty excited about that. This weekend is Old Drum Day up on Main Street at the Historical Society complex, nine to four. They've got a full agenda, so if you have any questions, let me know, or you know, Suzanne at the chamber, Mike at the Historical Society, and there's a lot of information on the Facebook page as well. That's it.
Thank you.
I wanted to, I wanna thank you for the great job you did.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, I think by the time you were done, everybody knew exactly how that worked.
I hope so.
We are in the spring of things, literally, it's warming up, and so we're getting really busy. We're working with HR and PD, trying to get our hiring for summer going next week. We should've gotten your activity guides in the mail last week, there's a lot of new, really awesome things in there. People have questions that they want us to know, but we're excited about the STEAM programming, and partnering with codes, and doing all sorts of things like that. And you also noticed that lines like the dam got a little bit of a facelift last week. We got some rock put on the dam that'll help strengthen it and prevent some of the erosion. And then we'll hope to get that fountain in at the beginning of May, so lines like this are looking really good.
Thank you. Go.
Bonnie?
With one fundraiser begins another, so this is our next one. A girl scout named Melody Merkess is doing her gold award, and so she's gonna be selling these t-shirts that you can buy for twenty dollars, that's actually Gunner silhouette in there. And she's gonna be at our station this Thursday from two to four. She's also got a Facebook page, and they come in a multitude of colors and sizes, that's the back. The Paris was nice enough to donate a significant amount of money to get the back sponsorship on that, so we're looking forward to helping her spread the word, and if you wanna spread the word about Don't Be a Jackwagon, you can buy a window plane, as well, if the hashtag Don'tBeAJackwagon on it, so adorn your window with that.
That'd be cool.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Texas stick.